Welcome to the September 5th, 2018 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since six o'clock discussing a purchase agreement and a personnel matter. And can we rise? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we, we don't need to take a vote to go back into open session. Okay. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Christine Beck.
Will O'Beir.
Chris Meyer.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Meredith Moriarty.
And Judy Kehoe.
Approval of the minutes, we'll be approving minutes from the August 8th special board meeting and the minutes of the August 8th regular board meeting.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That passes. Superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. So it's been awhile since we met. So in the interim, we had our new teacher orientation. I know a few board members were able to join us during the lunch. So we welcomed all our new teachers. We had some curriculum development, technology training, and they were able to meet with their mentors all prior to the school year. So it was a great couple days. We also had our administrative retreat, which includes all of our administrators, our supervisors, and directors on August 22nd. During that day, we completed our action plans for the 2018-19 school year. And we did align our plans to the goals the Strategic Planning Committee had drafted last year. We also had a presenter, John Coverdale, who provided training on the importance for school leaders' roles in addressing issues surrounding diversity, equity, and cultural proficiency. I will present our action plans to the board at a board meeting, either the next board meeting or the first October one. So I'll go through them in a little more detail. The Strategic Planning Committee also met last week. We had our meeting and we met for a half day. We were able to make a lot of progress. We looked at the action plans, the district plans, and some of our metrics. So hopefully, the goal is still to stay on our timeframe. I think we'll get there and be able to present that officially to the board later on this year as part of the February presentation. Yesterday, we had all our staff return for opening day activities. This was the first year we had all of our support staff attend as well. It was a great way to have them included in the opening day message, as well as the, some training that's mandatory and, which is really hard to find during the school year. We had our annual barbecue as well. It was very hot and some grill malfunctions, but everyone got fed. We're all looking forward to the students arriving tomorrow. I know we've had a lot of students in here. We had freshman orientation today. I'd also like to give a special shout out to our custodians and our maintenance workers who endured a lot of heat and humidity this summer, getting our buildings and grounds ready for the week. So it's been a great last few weeks. I'd also ask Judy Kehoe to report on an error that was made with our assessments, which was present, she presented at our last board meeting to give the board an overview of what happened.
Right. So on the meeting of August 8th, we adopted our warrants and we set our tax rates. On August 16th, the Bethlehem Town Assessor contacted me to advise that she had made an error on the rolls. And there were 12 special franchise parcels, these are utilities for the most part, and their values were accidentally overstated, just short of $1.7 million. So those 12 parcels are in fact legally entitled to that reduction in their values. And what that translates into multiplying that value times our tax rates is about $35,000 in school tax dollars. These values on the special franchise parcels come to the town from the state. And the error related to the equalization rate of 95%, which should have been applied to those parcels, but inadvertently had not been applied. So in order to correct this following the board's vote to approve everything, we would have had to have scheduled a special board meeting that in order to hit the timeline to get the bills out to the community, we would have had to have taken action by August 22nd. The impact to the average homeowner is very slight. For a $250,000 home, it would have added just over one penny more to the overall tax rates. So for a $250,000 home, it would have been about $2.81. Each year, there are corrections that happen to the tax bills because of valuation errors or changes on exemption. So they discover, because the homeowner gets their bill, discovers that something is amiss, calls the town assessor, and then they're legally entitled to that change, so we put that through. Of course, the corrections always lower the amount of tax that the district will collect, and we just absorb them because that's how the process works. So you have some context for that. Over the last five years, the average shortfall has been about $38,000 per year. The lowest that we ever saw was about $7,000. The highest was $83,000. So what is unusual for us is to start the collection season with a $35,000 shortfall right at the beginning of the collection season. We are covering it as we do any other unexpected event that occurs fiscally during the year. But as a follow-up, Jody and I do have a meeting scheduled to speak with the town about this matter and the concern that we have with the impacts that this has caused for us. We talked at the last meeting as well about some concerns. Recall that we had increased our tax surcharge reserve because there were some retroactive settlements that were occurring, which has not typically been the case. So we do want to convey those concerns with the town when we meet with them and see what we can do to make sure that we don't experience something like this going forward.
So that's my report, but I don't know if anyone has any questions for Judy on the issue. And the tax bills have been mailed. We confirmed with the mailhouse today that they were sent out August 31st. We don't know if they're, we've had a number of calls from people who have been looking for them. I checked my mail today. I did not get my bill either, but I believe it should be arriving by tomorrow. Again, it's in the hands of the postal service at this point, but they have been released by the district. What we have told people is that they can get a copy of their tax bill on the district's website. So there's a big banner right on the front page of the website, so people can click on that and bring up their own parcel and get the information for their own planning purposes. And the bill seriously is in the mail.
And what's the deadline, Judy, for payment?
Because the 30th of September falls during the weekend, it is October 1st this year to be paid without penalty.
Judy, how, how were they mailed? What, is it a bulk rate that we use, or was it?
Yeah, it goes through a mailhouse and it's a bulk rate.
Oh, so it's a bulk rate, okay.
Yeah.
And that's why it's taking so long?
Could be.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, yes.
Next is the Board of Education report. I was able to stop by the new teacher orientation luncheon briefly. A couple other board members were there as well. And it was, it's always great to see those bright eager faces. And I'm glad that we can provide a nice lunch for them to welcome them to the district. And most of us were at opening session yesterday, and I thought it was, went very well. Very entertaining presentation by Jody. I just wanted to say that in my remarks, I, when I was mentioning the various departments within the district, I neglected to mention the Transportation Department, and I felt very badly about it. They're very dedicated and hardworking, and literally, this district could not run without them. So I, I sent Cindy Jurowitz an email this morning, but I also wanted to just mention it tonight, that we really do appreciate all their, their work. And the last thing I have is I sent all of you an email earlier today. We have a, we're supposed to have a, an advocacy liaison with NISBA, which Lynn Lenhart has fulfilled that role for probably the 30 odd years she was on the board. Strangely, she wasn't willing to continue on in that role. So we do need to designate an advocacy liaison, so I'm looking for a volunteer.
What is an advocacy liaison?
They work with NISBA on various advocacy events, such as meeting with legislators, getting out word about any things that are, happen governmentally that the districts need to know about. And you would be the conduit for the board to know what's happening legislatively.
What kind of time commitment is involved, if you know?
I don't know. There were, you know, a number of things listed in their e-letter, but in terms of actual time commitment, I don't know that.
I would assume it would probably get, be somewhat more of a commitment as it gets toward their legislative sessions and things, probably not much in the off-season.
Right. And I don't think you have to do everything. You just need to be there to communicate with them and then communicate with us.
I would volunteer if anyone else wants to do it, that's fine, but.
Okay. Going once, going twice? Sold.
That's all.
Thank you. Okay. And that's all I had. Any other board members?
I, I just wanted to compliment Jody on a really wonderful opening day's talk and the presentation. I, I know that you had a little help with it, but it really, it really sent a wonderful message, and I heard that from quite a number of teachers afterwards, that they felt very good about it. So I just, I thought I should say that. I also, it sort of goes upon last year's, which was also well-done. And, you know, if we were to look at, you know, the history of superintendents and opening day, I'd have to give you the number one slot on this.
Thank you.
That's what I was gonna say as well. I thought it was an exceptional opening day. I thought your speech was terrific. I thought it was very humorous. Jonathan and I want to play Jeopardy next year.
Someone else suggested the pyramid game.
Yeah. We were just answering it. We're like, we know that answer, so we wanted to be involved as well. But no, it was great. The excitement is always great on opening day. And the atmosphere, just the last couple of years, as Jonathan mentioned, has been so wonderful. And it's definitely because of the administration and how the district is run and how people feel very comfortable coming to work. So it was, it was really nice, and I, I enjoyed it and laughed quite a bit. So thank you.
I just have a couple questions about the heat. Obviously, this is not going to continue, but it is something that we have to deal with in September and June. So my two questions were first, just an update us on where we are with fans or air conditioners in the, in the parts of the buildings that we know have identified as very uncomfortable, such as second floors and I believe the Eagle Library. And then I also wanted to know what our policies are about athletic practices and games as well.
Yep. So as part of the budget presentations last year, Greg had presented a couple different options, ceiling fans and pedestal fans. So he did identify working with the principals in the middle school and high school, different rooms to install. So there's some rooms that have ceiling fans and some that have pedestals, only a few in each area than the rooms that we identified as the hottest in the district. And working on ways to get feedback from the teachers, but also the students, because they're, in those buildings, the students are in and out of different classrooms, as well as teachers, so they can let us know if they're feeling a difference in, it's not going to reduce the temperature, but if there's more airflow, does it create more of a cooling effect? So that's the information we're looking for, as well as noise, particularly from the pedestal fans. And then we anticipate that once we're able to figure out if that does make a difference, that's something that the board could consider if we wanted to do something in more classrooms that are continuing to register, you know, hot temperatures. So that's where we are. They're ready, they are installed.
They're installed.
Yep. And we're good to go.
There's no problem with any of them at Ellis Mayor? I thought there were some window issues. Is that, so all of the second floor?
Well, there were, when they put the new, they had the old air conditioners in some of the rooms, but when they put the new windows in, those units don't fit. So if we decide that, let's say, for example, we think the ceiling fans are the most efficient, they're creating a cooling effect, we would look to install them in those rooms as well, as long as that was something.
So they don't have anything now?
They just have regular fans, yeah.
Okay.
In regards to athletics, we abide by what the state does in regards to the heat index. And if it gets to, is it 95, right, with the heat index, we cancel games. Or they go, if it's a practice, they can go inside and practice. So we have had to cancel several games preseason and some today because it's, the heat index is too high. So hopefully, the temperatures will cool off and the rooms will be cool and the sports teams will be able to play.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone? First?
Just two things. First, I got to attend the Strategic Planning Committee event last Wednesday. Wednesday, Wednesday. And I saw it was gonna be a three-hour meeting, and when you see three hours, you're like, oh, oh no. But I have to say, it was actually an excellent meeting, because we got together with parents, teachers, administrators, and just to hear the great discussion and a lot of the great ideas that we have going forward over the next, you know, five, 10 years, looking at what we're doing and where we want to be. So I just thought, I thought it was an excellent meeting. The other thing, on a side note, today was my son's kindergarten orientation. And it was so cool, because I got to see all the, I got to see two real emotions, excitement and fear at the same time. And it made me, why am I saying this? I'm saying it because it reminded me of something that my, my old hall principal told me. And I think it just rings true for, for everybody in the district, and I just want to say it, is that whether you're the bus driver, or custodian, nurse, the teacher, or the principal, you may have been doing this for 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, it's, it's an opening day. But for that student, it's their only first day of kindergarten, or it's their only first day of fifth grade. And so to remember that, you know, oh, I've been doing this for 20 years, yeah, no. No, for that child, at that moment, like, that's all they know. And to just make sure that you put that love and care that you can do, you can put into it, and make those kids have that awesome first day, because that'd be their only experience and that's what they're gonna remember. And so I just want to wish that for all of our members of the district.
That was very nice.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, our presentation tonight is on the Summer 2018 Program Updates. And our presenters will be Laurel Jones, whose rather lengthy title is RTI slash Instructional Technology slash Library Administrator.
I like to make an entrance with a very long title when I come. So I brought with me the team, the ELF team. So this is the Early Learning Focus, which is a program that we run in the summer, and they're the magic behind it. So they should really tell you all about it. Carrie McCabe is an ENL teacher at the Middle School. Martha McCaffrey is a lovely teacher at Slingerlands. Laura Hannigan teaches at Glenmont. And Linda Seymour is our RTI reading teacher at Glenmont. So I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Can we do the next slide? Oh, there we are. So the, you can see the structure of Summer ELF. It's a six-week program. It's held at Eagle Elementary School. It's three days a week from 8:30 to 11:30. And, you know, our, our focus is to maintain the skills that the kids have, have learned in kindergarten and to develop some more reading and writing strategies for them as they, as they move along. Next button.
So how do we choose which students come to our program? Our kindergarten teachers, through probably about the mid-year, they go through their assessments that they've been working on with the kids, usually their benchmarks, and they try to just find kids who are really struggling, who are not progressing, and they will recommend them to our program. And this past year, we had 66 students that were invited, and we had a total of 45 that attended. And in each of our classes, we had about 15 to 16 students that came with us.
So you can imagine going to school in the summer can be a big task to ask of children after they've just completed a year of school. And we wanted them to really feel good about where they already are as students and not to feel like this is something, a terrible experience to go through, like they haven't, like they've done something wrong. So we really try to create an environment, the environment's really important, that they feel like it's going to be fun. So we really try to create a summer camp feel. The outside of the classroom, from the moment they come in, is decorated with log cabin, and it has their names and little wild animal, little pictures. And inside the classroom, there are decorations such as a tent for them to do activities inside of. It's part of the decor. They also have stuffed animal, wild animals, and trying to think if there's any other slides.
Flashlight campfires.
Yes. So kind of like, and campfires are set up. So everything inside the classroom is made to make it feel like they went to summer camp rather than school.
And going with that, like each week, we would change the theme just to make it more, make it fun, make it feel like summer camp, like it's not like a regular day at school. So these are the different themes we would do each week, and all of our activities would surround these themes. So all of our reading, our writing, and our math, and any kind of brain breaks, our videos, things we would do would all surround a different theme each week. And I remember on Thursdays, I would talk to my kids about, well, next week, we're gonna be camping. And they were so excited, and, ooh, are we gonna go on a bear hunt? You know, and it just made it fun for them, and they really, they really had a good time each week.
So we made sure that we did crafts and activities that went along with those themes. And so each theme had different activities. Beach time, of course, had water and sand type of things. And sweet treats, of course, had we, we made crafts that looked like a sweet treat. Depending on allergies, we also had sweet treats in the classroom. So some, an idea of some of the activities that we did, and some of the crafts that we did, we did flashlight reading. So they would go inside the tent and they could do, they'd have a flashlight and they'd partner read. They would go around the classroom and they would find stars with sight words on them, and they would go and read them and record them. Smore crafts, so they would create a project and it would have a smore, and it would usually have a book or a poem or a song inside. Backpack paper bag crafts, usually writing would go along with this as well, or a book that went along. We would do read-alouds about camping and camp songs. So again, just fun and motivating, and they really didn't even know that they were really there learning. Oh, it's me again? That happened so fast. All right. So our instruction, we focused on three components. We focused on reading, writing, and word work in the program. So we started with end-of-the-year assessments that the teachers had done, and then we did some beginning assessments on sight words. We really wanted to make a big focus this year on, on their sight word knowledge and really find out where they are with their alphabet letter sounds as well, sounds and letter ID. That way, we could differentiate the instruction for the students. So some students may have been working on mastery of sight words in isolation and in context, while other students were still really working on trying to anchor those letter sounds, maybe with a picture that is consistent and uniform across the district. So some of them, some of those children were making an alphabet book and doing some flash card kind of activities, doing matching games, anything that they could do to recognize that letter. So, and then we also did in our writing program, so again, reinforcing letter-sound correspondence with writing and creating, and using some of those sight words that they were practicing also helped to reinforce the sight words in the context of writing at the time. And it's really important for students to, to, during that break time from school, is to be able to maintain their stamina with reading and writing activities, because that little break in time, these are the children that need it the most, is to be able to build that stamina.
And we kept the, the structure of the program similar to what they would do during a typical school day. So they would come in, you know, they might have a little wake-up work activity, we would do a morning meeting, where we'd have a letter, they might spy snap words, we might have a math question, we would do our calendar, we would go through a schedule. And we still incorporated math into the program, because it's important for them to just keep practicing those skills. And I know in, in my class, I had a few friends who just really were really strong math students, and that kind of gave them that confidence to then, okay, try that reading and try that writing. And they just kind of needed that to, to feel like they could do it. So we just want to keep that consistent with them, because then when they move into first grade, they'll still be kind of going through the same structure and the same typical day.
Did you hear that? Yeah? Is it my part yet? Wait, it's my part. Okay. Sorry. And then as the RTI reading person, I sort of just did a scaled-down version of what I typically do during the school year, and giving that, those kids a double dose of the reading and their sight words and, and things like that. I'm able to pull kids in small groups of either two or three kids for 20 minutes every other day. And I would keep the groups small, like two kids with the groups, the kids that really needed their alphabet practice. And we just did a lot of letter recognition and sounds, and then other kids, it was sight words and doing the beginning bookwork. So sort of like what I do during the school year, but in a scaled-down version. And it's nice to be able to pull them aside in a different environment and have them for 20 minutes and really be able to, to hone in on those skills.
So all the materials that we do use, we go out and find them ourselves. Usually, teachers pay teachers. Pinterest is awesome. And we would just share them amongst each other. A lot of the reading materials that we would use, we order these keep books, which are really pretty awesome. They're little miniature books that cover different topics. And what's great about them is every child gets their own book. And after we read it as a group, sit on the carpet, read, they can go off and read on their own. They get to take the book home with them at the end of the day, and they can take it home and read it with their parents and show their parents the words that they're learning and show them how great, how creative readers are becoming. We also try to find leveled books. We're lucky enough to use the bookroom at Eagle that has a lot of books, but we also use reading A to Z books, where we just print them out offline, photocopy them, and that way, the kids also can take it home and practice. For every theme, for every week, we all go to the library to try to find books that correspond with our theme, so that we can do fun read-alouds with the kids, circle them around the campfire and have, they love it. We also find, or bring in our own books for kids, for when we have some downtime, they can partner read, they can choose a book that really interests them, so they're not stuck reading books that we just provide for them. Another great thing we do is we find poems that go along with every theme. And it, sometimes they're songs the kids love to sing, and we'll play the video for them to get the beat to it first. They love it, and they get to take the lyrics home with them later on also.
So although it's very fun, it's also educational. This is the third year we've done the ELF program in this manner. So up on the screen are the results of the last two years. The kids haven't started school yet this year, so I can't make a comparison with benchmarks from the end of the year to the beginning of the year. The goal is that kids do not have regression. And as you can see, in 2016, that would be 93% of our students met that goal, which, you know, is incredible for these incoming first graders. The second year, we had a much larger population of students. And again, they really did a nice job. So the green and yellow pieces of your pie chart are those kids who did meet and exceed the goal. So we'll find out what happens as the start of the school year with the 2018 program, but we think it's a great addition for those students who are going from K to one.
Do you, do you keep track of the students that are recommended for the program but choose not to attend? The reasons why they are not?
Yes. So, some of them, their kids go to summer camp, and that's just what they do for childcare purposes, and so they're unable to do a half-day program. So it's Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for half-day. We were really lucky this year. We were really lucky this year that transportation made it so we could bus kids to the Y, so any student who went to the Y for the summer program could get picked up there and dropped off there, so that did increase our numbers this year, that was a really great addition for those students. Others, you know, we really ask that they be there the majority of the time, because we can only take forty-five, we were at cap this year, which is exciting, and then we hate to turn people away, you know, so it, it becomes a lottery system if we have to. So, really, it's, they're either going on vacation, or they have childcare issues and they can't do a whole time, but we do track all of the students, I have a list to track all the students, so from two thousand and sixteen, I'm still tracking them as they go into third and fourth grade, to see if they are no longer requiring RTI services. That's our overall goal, is that they would, you know, really make improvements and be able to not need the extra help anymore.
Laurel, do you track the students that, I assume these pie charts are of the students that took part in the program?
Correct.
Do you track in a similar way the students that did not take part in the program?
I do not, I mean, I, no, I don't put them in sort of pie chart format.
The reason, the reason I'm asking is I think it would be interesting to see how effective the program is, and I think that comparison might be fascinating.
Sure.
Because if it, if it shows that, as I would expect it would, that the students that don't participate regress, then I think that's a larger argument to perhaps make to the board to increase the cap that you're experiencing.
Great, I will get you those numbers.
Is the increase due in any particular reason, is it because we changed reading assessment tools? Did we change it at the beginning of last year, or was it the year before?
So, we changed to iReady, that, that does not impact this. This is really, we didn't really use iReady for that as much as we use teacher recommendation.
Okay.
iReady was new, and we, we didn't want to bank on using that assessment only to, you know, provide the services to kids, but we're certainly looking at that as we move forward and making sure how closely it aligns with the other reading assessments that we do, F and Ps, and then we can use that data as well.
But the reason you see the jump from twenty-eight to forty-four, then forty-five this year, the first year we offered it, it wasn't approved until the budget cycle, so invites did not go out until very late in the year.
Late, okay.
So, people had already made their summer plans, so we invited the same number of students, but far more were unable to attend just because they'd already made summer plans.
Thank you. You're welcome. So, we want to get the, we want to get it out early, however, the growth that kids have in kindergarten can be like at such a strong trajectory, we really don't want to invite kids who don't need to be there, because, well, first of all, we want to be able to invite more kids that do need to be there, but also, it makes the differentiation so great among the small classes, we prefer to have everybody a little bit closer together.
Just a, just a couple things. First of all, I think you know this, but I just want to say it for the public record, that, that what you guys do over the summer is absolutely vital and critical, and, and you should be thanked so much for, for the effort that you guys put in. The two-month period of no school for a lot of kids is just crushing. You know, you're looking at, you're looking, you see no change up there, you're like, what's wrong, why is there no change? Well, because if they were out for two months, the regression would be significant, and to be able to hold where you, a kindergarten teacher left off and pick up right there in the fall is amazing. And I just, just want to make sure that you understand how wonderful the thing is that you're doing. The other part, there's one thing I want to correct you on, you said, you know, sometimes the kids might not want to go because it's summer, I know for a fact that there are a lot of kids that want to go very badly, they love it, they are five and six, and they love it, they, they're the ones that love it. It's you guys are the ones that are giving up your summers, and sitting in, you know, sometimes a rather warm building, giving up your time for these kids, so I just want to commend you for that.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our second.
Can I just ask you a question? It wasn't necessarily for them, I'm wondering where in the budget the L program falls, is it just out of the general curriculum, or does it feed out of RTI and special education at all?
No, it was added a couple of years ago as part of the general budget, so we have a line item for that.
Our second presentation is Edge of Leadership, and it will be presented by Dave Domell, our high school principal, and the students.
Giving up their night before the first day, their last day of summer vacation.
Yes, thank you for letting us come and share with you, and the first thing I want to do is thank the amazing group of students that went with me to this program, not only are they coming here tonight, the day before school, but they actually trusted their principal enough to go to a three-day overnight conference, which I didn't think I'd be able to talk anybody into, so, a special group of kids here. The Edge of Leadership program is, is a three-day program, overnight program, in, in Brattleboro, Vermont. It's a leadership program, obviously, and students, the unique thing is students work collaboratively with the adults there, so I was on an equal playing field with them, which was intriguing to me when we initially signed up. There were four schools there all together participating, as you see in the big group shot up there, the schools were from New Hampshire, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts, and then there, and then there was us. So, before I, before I get into a little bit more specifically about what we did and have the students share, I just want to talk about why this happened, how, why. This, this spring, I went out to the Project Adventure course, as many of you know, we have a Project Adventure course at the middle school and here at the high school, and I was really trying to go out and have fun with the students, interact, and, and overcome my fear of heights. So, that is me on top of what they call the pamper pole. Luckily, Sam is the one that harnessed me in, so I felt very good about that, but I, I went out that day just to have fun and interact with the students, and what I found out going out there was that there's so much more to Project Adventure, including, you know, the leadership piece, the collaboration, the teamwork, the trust, but more importantly, the ability to push yourself to your limit and, and do that in a safe environment, which I think is so important for students. After talking to Fred Powers, I, I decided, I really wanted to try to incorporate this into a summer transition program, which we did this year with some of our eighth-grade students, and talking to, to Mr. Powers, he put me onto this program, he knew about it from work he had done in the past, he thought it would be great if I brought some students out, and if we trained them to kind of be our conduit, and possibly our, work with our future eighth graders coming up in, in a transition program using Project Adventure. So, that's how it came about. I then went out to seek students, students of, that I thought would, might be interested, but also of, of high character, because obviously, going away for three days in Vermont, we're staying in cabins, is, is a little bit scary at first to think about, so I knew I had to bring some pretty, pretty unique students, and I sent an email out to the teachers with links about the program and what it was all about, and names started flying back at me, and Sam was in good shape, because her name started popping up right away, and I knew she harnessed me, so she was the first on the list, and then, to their credit, they were, their name came up on multiple occasions from, from many, many teachers. So, it, it was a special group that I took with me, I want to thank Mr. Powers, but also the BOU, who, who funded some of the trip, most of the trip, so I wanted to publicly thank them as well. So, as I said, it's a three-day program, and if you look up there in, in the circle, it's the first day, you're working on connections, the second day is empowerment, and the third day is leading. And I was amazed by how quickly students, adults, people from other districts, other states, came together to, to complete activities that were very challenging, where we often had very little direction. So, it is, it is, it was an amazing experience for me, I, after talking to the students, I, I believe they feel the same way, and, and I believe that we all got a lot out of it, including myself. So, I, I'm going to let them share some of their experiences with you, I asked them to specifically go over three questions that I thought would give you some information, some more information about the program, there's some pictures up there, you know, some of the activities that we're doing, and I will start first, if you don't mind, do you want to go in order, or do you care? All right, I'll start first with Abigail.
Well, for me, and I'm sure my peers agree too, it was a real honor to be chosen, especially since there are only five students who were able to go from our school, and I'm honestly really excited that I was chosen, because it was a great experience, and while I was there, I learned a lot of important leadership skills, and how to communicate with others, and for me, one of the best experiences going was not being able to have my phone on me at all times, twenty-four-seven, because I always have it on me, and I guess it just taught me the importance of being able to connect with people in person and not having a screen in front of me, so yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Abby, I was actually really excited when Mr. Domell told us that we were going to this, because Project Adventure was so much fun, and then it was like, hey, let's go do that for three days straight, and I was like, okay, awesome, and while we were there, I think one of the best experiences was just like being able to connect with people on like a, in like a different setting, like we always like meet kids in school, and we're like talking about what's on social media, and like all these different sports, and then you're with these people that you barely know, and you're like at camp, so it was like a summer camp, and it was just awesome to be able to make friends without having to worry about like how many followers you have and all that. And then, I guess personally, I just think it was great to learn like that there are different types of leaders, and I really learned that you don't have to be the person who's going to stand up and direct everyone, you can really lead by example.
I was also really excited that I got chosen, because I felt like, I didn't really realize how much I stood out to teachers and stuff like that, and so it made me feel like really honored that I was chosen by teachers. And I learned that it's okay to like put yourself out there in like a group, because I didn't know anyone except for these five, and I didn't even know them that well at the time, and I don't really have the confidence normally to just go up to people and say hi and introduce myself all the time, so it was a different like environment for me in order to just go meet everyone, and it was really cool to get to know everyone so much in the first day for me, it was really, that I think was one of like the greatest experiences, like becoming friends with the majority of the people there on the first day only, and like being able to like get to know them, and like being able to learn how to trust them, and the program's impact on me was, it taught me how to work in a group, and at the same time, it taught me how to work independently, and how like you, you should know both ways and both skills is really important to have, and it was also really nice to learn how, just getting to know someone on one day, you can trust them, like the second day, I learned how to trust everyone, and we like did climbing, and I was able to trust everyone, and I had no problem like reaching out of my comfort zone in order to do things I don't normally do, like I climbed something really high, and I'm like scared of heights, but I did it anyways, and it was so awesome and stuff, so, thank you.
My initial reaction to being called out of class when Mr. Domell called me down first period is I thought I was going to get in trouble for not having a parking pass, so it was a huge relief to me to, when he told me about this program, and it was even more, I was very honored, you know, that he chose me, and then I was even more honored when I found out that teachers were the ones who were recommending our names, so for my name to pop up multiple times, it meant a lot, and I was glad I had that kind of impact in class, and adults thought of me that way, so. What I learned, I gotta say, my, my favorite experience during the program was the ropes course, not only just because like I enjoyed Project Adventure, I know everyone here, I think, enjoy Project Adventure, but it was great, because we had groups of, you know, seven kids, but you had seven kids of all different types of skills, like for me, I'm someone who wants to climb up sixty feet in the trees, but we didn't have kids in our group who all wanted to do that, so there was kids who, you know, would rather like tie and do the harnesses, and, you know, learn how the mechanism worked, and it was like great to listen to those kids too, because I know how I am, and I know how a couple other kids in the group were, of just wanting to get up there, but it was, you know, to learn from them on just the smaller parts of how things were working, and it really showed how everyone had to be a part of the group for, you know, for everybody to do their own part, and for everything to work. The impact it had on me, just a side note, the first day of, I think it was the first day, it might have been the second day, each of us had, were assigned someone else in the group, and it not, wasn't necessarily someone your age, I know other people, like I personally had one of the teachers, who you had to observe for the next couple of days, to see how, you know, they used leadership qualities and how they were with other people, and at the end, you would reveal who that person was and talk about them, and Patrick actually had me, and something he said about me really meant a lot, and I, I hadn't really noticed it until this camp, but it was how, I guess I'd made personal connections with a lot of people in my group, in almost every group that I was in, and he noticed that about me, and I think that's really important in life, to make personal connections, because that's how you're a great leader, is when everyone in your group can really connect with you and feel comfortable talking, so that's what I left with, and I think that was the most important lesson I learned.
I had the same reaction, I was scared, because I thought I was going to get in trouble, but I was very relieved when I thought, and honored when I was chosen to go to Edge of Leadership, and I had a blast there, it was very fun, and I learned a lot about trust, because me personally, I don't trust many people often, and with them putting us at the edge of comfort and challenging us, that really helped, I guess, and by the third day, I really trusted pretty much everyone there with the ropes course and everything we did, and impact personally, it really opened up me to trust more people and make connections faster, because due to the first day, everyone was so welcoming and nice, and it just made it really easy to talk to people and trust who you're with.
So, I just wanted to note that on the last day, they bring you together, and they talk about what you're going to be doing back in your community, and I won't go into detail what, what their plan is, but it was pretty profound what they came up with, they recognized that without the connections, the second and third day would not have been successful. So, it kind of goes back to what the district's emphasis is on, on relationships, and reinforces that a great deal, because they all immediately, that was the first thing they picked up on, so I thought that was, that was, I sat back and I was like, wow, that's, that's, that's great. So, they have some things that they're, they're planning on doing this year, one in which they're going to invite the teachers, they're going to have a, a week that they're going to be promoting the teachers to eat in the cafeteria with the students, so developing relationships, connections, and they had some fantastic ideas that I would have never come up with, so I want to thank them for that. I also want to thank their parents for allowing them to go on this, this trip that they, you know, they had a website and a permission slip, and, and they trusted me, so I want to thank them and for getting them a ride up there, and, and for the board and admin district admin for supporting us on the trip, so thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say, you all speak exceptionally well, and you should be very proud of yourself to get up in front of this room and speak the way you did about this program, you, you just presented yourself extremely well, and it was great that you were selected, and, and what was interesting about the whole, the, a theme that many of you had was that you were surprised at what teachers thought of you, and that goes a long way, and, and that was great that you shared that, because a lot of times, teachers don't share that, and you might not know, but now you do know, and it makes a big difference, and I think that's, that's wonderful, so thank you.
Can I grab a picture of Dr. Deroz?
And we also have Eagle pens, I know this is going to be the highlight of your summer.
I might have to have some of these stagger and crouches in front to fit you all in.
Now, it's time for recognition of visitor. Now it's time for recognition of visitors on an agenda item. The board has recently updated its rules about visitor comments, so I would just like to read these. The board values and welcomes civil, respectful statements and clear, concise communications that informs its deliberations. The board uses the public comment period as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but will not debate issues or enter into a question and answer session. It is also important that no person addressing the board initiate charges or complaints about individual board members, or employees, or students of the district. Such charges or complaints should be presented directly to the superintendent. Speakers are encouraged to provide the board with a written copy of their comments and other appropriate supporting documentation. To address the Board of Education, please wait to be called upon by the board president. At the microphone, please state your name, your full name. Direct your comments to the board, do not turn and speak to the audience, keep your comments as concise as possible. Speakers are expected to treat others with respect, confining their remarks to school district issues, and do not use the public speaking portions of board meetings to make personal statements about any individual, or engage in any commentary that is slanderous or abusive. The board president may rule any speaker out of order who makes such statements. So do we have anybody who would like to address the board on an agenda item?
Not after that, no.
No one?
I, I do want to say one thing about the, just the-
Sure.
-the first paragraph. I don't want to deter anybody from speaking, obviously, I agree with a lot of the comments here, and they, they need to be outlined, but speakers are encouraged to provide the board with a written copy of their comments. I know it's encouraging, but we don't want to deter anybody from having such a stringent policy, so I just want to look at that last sentence and maybe, you know, revisit that as having it published, or, I don't know, it was just a thought.
I think it was intended, if someone had a written copy of something, to, they could share it with the board.
Okay.
It was more the intent, but maybe-
Yeah, I'm just afraid if somebody sees that, well, I'm not going to speak up because I don't have it written.
Right.
So.
Okay, we'll look at revising that. Okay, so if we don't have any comments, we'll move on to number seven, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Yes, we would like to thank SUNY Albany for their stipends for the university and the high school program. Number eight, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 20.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next is number nine, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 18.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Number 10, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, we'll recognize visitors on non-agenda items. Could you come to the microphone, please? And give us your full name, please?
My name is Jennifer Bull. I was just wondering if there was any motion on the sale of Clarksville. I've not been able to see any signs that the sale has gone through, or what's actually happening with that property.
Nothing as of yet, no action?
It's still being leased by the Albany sheriffs, and they haven't gone through with the purchase at this point?
It's still in process.
Is there any idea of when it will go through?
We can't discuss that. Okay, anyone else? Okay, future meetings and events. Next regular board meeting is on September 5th. There will be, I'm sorry, what?
The 7th, the 20th is the next meeting.
Oh.
Today's the 5th.
I'm sorry. Right you are. Okay, there will be, yes.
Mike, can we just back up a minute? I noticed that we're, we're working with the EFTors, and I thought I'd heard something about we were going to look again at the-
Right, we're going to do an RFP this year for, to put out there for other tour companies.
So we can see what other tour companies have to offer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On September 17th at 5:30, there will be a board retreat here at the high school. The next board meeting will actually be on September 20th, not the 5th. Anticipated executive session at 6 o'clock, and regular board meeting at 7:00. There will be an audit committee meeting on September 24th at 5:00 PM, and a policy committee meeting at 6 o'clock, so Jody will have a full evening that, that evening. And then there is another board meeting on October 3rd, again, 6 o'clock executive session, 7 o'clock regular board meeting. There's no need to go back into executive session, so can I have a motion to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.